Dr. Mohamed Julde Jalloh along with his mentors. Can we give them a warm welcome please? Honorable ministerial members here present, the ambassador of Sierra Leone to the United States, Ambassador Abubakar Sidi Kwar. The prominent representative of Sierra Leone to the United Nations, Dr. Ali Kabak. Members of delegation of the Honorable Vice President, fellow Sierra Leones, friends of Sierra Leone here present this afternoon, distinguished ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of the embassy of the Republic of Sierra Leone to the United States and the Sierra Leone diaspora community in the United States, we want to warmly welcome the Honorable Vice President to the United States. We have a very vibrant chair, the Sierra Leone People's Party, Washington DC chapter, our own very vibrant. So they will take us to the program. I hand it over to you. Thank you so much. Please give a round of applause to Madame Mekki Nakata. I welcome you all. My regional chairman is here. Chairman Mohamed Ba from Texas, Regional Executive. Thank you all for coming. Chapter members, chapter chairman, I saw the chairman for New Jersey, all other chairman New York. All political party, APC, SLPP, C4C, NGC, we welcome you all. Other organizations present, we're gonna take this time to welcome each and every one of you all. We're going to have a great time. There's gonna be a question and answer session and be ready to hear from our Vice President, Dr. Julde Jalloh. The remarks by representative of the political parties. First on our list, we don't recall the Regional Chairman of the SLPP North America, Chairman Mohamed Ba. Can you please come to the podium sir? Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Vice President. One country.
One people.
One people.
One country.
Your Excellency Vice President, Dr. Mohamed Julde Jalloh. Your Excellency, on behalf of the Sierra Leone People's Party here in North America. It is a great privilege for me to welcome our Vice President to his town hall within the year. On behalf of our region, I greet you, I salute you. And I also want to extend the greetings to our President, His Excellency President Julius Madaviu. We are fully in support of the new direction and we continue to support. Your Excellency, Sierra Leones at home and in the diaspora are most proud of your desire to transform our nation from one that is dependent on others for its development to a nation that is capable of not only feeding its own people but is capable of directing our cause as she moves towards a more equitable and just society eliminating health and social disparities and creating a substantial foundation for a better Sierra Leone. Please allow me to also recognize our Ambassador, Ambassador Sidi Abubakar Wah. Thank you so much Ambassador for working with us as a community.
A. A. P. P. C. C.
Above all, we are Sierra Leones. Honorable Vice President, Dr. Julde Jalloh. All protocols observed, so I don't waste time here. I want to make a great appeal to all of us. I want to make a great appeal to all of us. Sierra Leone belongs to one people. Sierra Leones. I commend Madaviu, Dr. Madaviu, our President, for a great job. A great job in the sense that I would put a Chinese over which states. If you want to invest for six months, plant corn. For a year, plant that. Forever lasting, educate your kids. If everything was wrong, at some point, there should come a time when you should put a full stop and say what, let's turn this country to a unit so that we can make Sierra Leone a better place. I want to go home. I want to make it very clear, I want to go home in peace and tranquility and without fear. No place like home. And I come here today, I have to belong to a particular domain. Domain here is APC. It does not mean I'm a bad person. We are all equally likely to belong to the unit. And economists say, only a fool will not participate in politics. Because in the day, politicians will ruin your life. So what I'm gonna advise us is this. We need to stop the infinite tendencies to say, do me or do you. It will never pay off. And I'm not here to preach. I'm here to make a plea. President Madaviu, you won the elections. It is clear.
Thank you.
Let's move on.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. One said, one said.
Ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of the LGC, we say country first. And this is what we want for Sierra Leone. Whoever is in governance, once elections are over, let's look forward to making the lives of Sierra Leones better.
Ladies and gentlemen, simply we would like to welcome our Vice President. At that meeting at the embassy, I passionately thank the President and I want to thank you for putting education first. The fact that this President came and the administration came with your leadership to say let's educate our children goes a long way. We all live in diaspora. Our children go to school from five years old to college for free. Is that also? Here is the President. Here is an administration with a vision to say let's educate our children for free. Let's give them a big round of applause for that. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
You can do better than that!
Alright, ladies and gentlemen. Just before we get to the question and answer, if they take their seats. Are we gonna make it real quick? It's not gonna be much. It's just four questions we're gonna take because we don't have enough time. But at this point, I want to call on Councilmember at large from Montgomery County, Mr. Will Jawando, who have a proclamation for the Vice President.
Thank you very much. Good evening everybody. Or to the folks of your heritage like me, Ekale. I'm the at-large member of Montgomery County Council. You're in Montgomery County, 1.1 million people. I'm the first African elected in this county. It's an honor to be here with the Vice President and the Ambassador and all the ministers who are here and all the friends and family and guests. When I got elected last year, I wore and I baba on the stage. I took the oath of office, right? And I stood up there for my father who came to this country in 1970 fleeing the Biafian Civil War from Ibadan and from Lagos. And came here to study, like many people did, right? Seeking opportunity. He stayed here, he never left. Like many people do also. Right here in Montgomery County, we're home to one of the largest African immigrant populations in the United States. If you take DC, Maryland and Virginia, we have the largest African immigrant population in the United States. Now Ethiopians are number one, but depending on the day, Sierra Leoneans are number two or three. Depending on who shows up with our brothers from Cameroon and Liberia. But West Africa is strong here. And it's an honor to represent all of you who live here. And I think what the Vice President said is so important. There are 42 plus million people of African descent in this country. And if you take Central and South America, tens of millions more. And we are inextricably connected to the 1.2 plus billion Africans. And we need each other to succeed if we are individually to succeed. And so having the Vice President here acknowledge the power and the importance of the diaspora is extremely important because we need each other to thrive. I don't think it's an accident that he's here. 400 years after the first documented slaves were brought to this country in 1619, the Hampton, Virginia. And I remind my black American brothers and sisters here that those people that got off those ships were African. And that they are your ancestors and they're my ancestors. And so we are connected and we must act that way economically, socially, civically and otherwise. Last thing I'll say and I'll present the proclamation. We need to establish the sister city relationship with West African countries. And I think Sierra Leone will be on top of the list. We have one. We have a current relationship. I'll be in Ethiopia this January with our sister city there in Gondar for a celebration. But I am pushing really hard for in the next year or two. And I think this is the time to do it. So I'll say it with the Vice President here that I would love for us to explore that relationship so that we can strengthen our ties with Montgomery County, with Maryland, with the region. So with that, it's my honor to present to the Vice President. I'm gonna briefly read this proclamation. It's very short and then you can ask your questions. This is from the Montgomery County Council. Whereas the Republic of Sierra Leone is a country on the west coast of Africa situated on the Atlantic Ocean with beautiful white sandy beaches. That's why I need the sister city. I need to get to these beaches. And an abundance of natural resources, which you heard the Vice President talk about. And whereas the honorable Dr. Jalloh is the Vice President of the Republic of Sierra Leone. And whereas the continental African community is the second fastest growing immigrant community in Montgomery County. And the Sierra Leonean community is a vibrant and active community contributing economically, culturally and socially to our county. And whereas Montgomery County is proud to be the first jurisdiction in the region to create an African Affairs Advisory Group to address issues pertaining to the African immigrant community. And whereas Montgomery County is honored to host the Honorable Vice President and his delegation on his first official visit to the United States. Now therefore be it resolved that the County Council of Montgomery County, Maryland, hereby honors and welcomes Vice President Dr. Jalloh, presented this day on the 23rd of November, December 2019, designed by myself, William Opeyemi Tafikiladi Jawando. Thank you God bless, Vice President. It's great to have you.
Stand over here. Mr. Ambassador.
Photo okay, photo one more time.
Will?
Yes.
Sorry, sorry. Okay, look here, look here.
Alright, thank you very much. Thank you Councilman at Large, Mr. Will Jawando for that beautiful presentation. And I'm pretty sure when you go to Sierra Leone, you will not regret it. So we have another Sierra Leonean that is going to Sierra Leone. We are going to take him from Nigeria. Alright. Alright, the Vice President will take his seat. We will give him a microphone and we will go to the question and answers. Myself and my colleague and I, as I said, it's gonna be just four questions. Two men and two ladies. We're gonna make it equal on that level, two, two. Okay? And as Fatmata will get the first person, as she goes to get the first person to ask question, remember we're not giving you our microphone. We are going to hold the microphone. You answer our question, we take it back. Alright? So Mrs. Fatmata, are you ready?
Yes, I am. So we're gonna make it easy, right? Two on this side and two from this side, right? So gonna start.
Let's, we're gonna go in first.
It's gonna be a female. Okay, yes. It's gonna be a female. And now pick a female and she will pick a male. He's gonna be on that row and now be here. Um, first.
Yeah, VOS, Voice of Salo. Television, yes.
My name is Mohamed Ray. I am from Bo. I've been here for the seven years now.
But can you?
My concern is I've been a teacher in Montgomery County here for 24 years. And I'm concerned why kids are failed in Sierra Leone. People are talking about nurses, but they're not really trying to tap up on teachers. You need American trained teachers probably. Sierra Leones, I mean not Americans, who have experience, who can deal with the Sierra Leone issue and the American experience to see why that is happening. What can we do to change things? So think about the teachers, not only nurses. I always say a nurses, nurses, nurses.
Alright, we're gonna take that and we'll take Dr. Nabigbili.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Dr. Mohamed Nabigbili. This question is going for Vice President. You know, I'm the Chairman of the Sierra Leone Progressive Union. We've been in existence for 25 years. We started with educational support to schools in Sierra Leone, especially universities. We've extended our program and helped build chairs and desks for schools in Sierra Leone. We donated to the military school, the police school. Last year we did in Bo, Kennebunk, Freetown. My question to you is, there are so many organizations here who want to help to build Sierra Leone. What have you to offer for somebody who can walk to Sierra Leone and want to help? What options does the person have to do that?
So we're gonna take all the questions. You need one more lady, a gentleman from here. And we'll give military a chance.
Yep. His Excellency, good evening sir. Mr. Minister of Energy, good evening sir. And Ambassador's all protocol. I speak from my heart. I have been in this country since 1972 before and most of you guys were born. But let me tell you, when I tell you I speak from my heart, because I'm not SOPP. Kanja knows that. I'm not APC. Mr. Bundu knows that. I'm a Sierra Leonean. I have been with every ambassador that has come to this country except Ambassador Wea. And I know he's wanted by military. Why haven't you come? But I tell you why. Because 2017, we had a big problem in Sierra Leone. The mudslide. An ambassador, Stevens, called us up and said, "Come, let's see what we can do." We had a meeting. I took Ambassador Stevens to New York and they gave us a container of medication and medical supplies. It's still sitting at the port. It is a shame. I give the shame to APC government 70% and I give the ship to SFAB government 30%. You know why? Because it's transitional. When a government comes in, it takes over what the government has done. Please remember, you said it is very important for us, the diaspora. Because we support, I didn't support my mother. Terrence Terry was my brother. He supported my mother. But I support people in Sierra Leone. Ambassador Wea, I will come. I have spoken my heart. One more question and I'll give it to this young gentleman.
My first of all, my name is Sir Adespio. My question here is simply this. The Vice President has echoed consistently the effort and the support of diaspora back home. Now Ambassador, now the Vice President, we are asking for a friendly investment policy for the diasporas who wants to invest home. I think we've done enough. That's my question. Please, please convey this message that we need an investment frankly for diasporas who wants to come back home and invest.
Thank you sir. Can we not allow the VP to answer those four questions? Because we need to leave this auditorium by 7pm. If we do have more time, then we're gonna take two more questions. Your Excellency sir.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Vandy. I will start with the question on the teachers. I totally agree with you. When we declared free education, we called it free quality education. So here there are two things. It's a problem of access and a problem of quality we have to address at the same time. To address quality, we are currently in the process of recruiting 5000 teachers. 5000 teachers. And I totally agree with you that we should not only focus on bringing expertise from the diaspora only in the health sector. But we can also tap into other sectors. But we have to start somewhere. And we want to start with the most urgent ones. That those are the ones that are already well placed. They already have a network. They are already going to Sierra Leone. I think just this afternoon, we agreed that we are going to revitalize the diaspora office in Sierra Leone so that at the end of the day, we'll be able to tap into those. I totally agree with you. We are recruiting 5000 teachers as a result to just improve quality. Because if you have more kids in school, you need more teachers to take care of them. But we are going to tap into your expertise in other areas other than just the health sector. What can you offer for people who want to help Sierra Leone? That is also linked to the question our sister who spoke from her heart on the medical equipment. Already in Sierra Leone, we have established the National Investment Board. The National Investment Board is chaired by the President and co-chaired by myself. And the infrastructure of that board is situated in my office. Like I said, where you want to improve the economy, you want to encourage foreign direct investment into your country, you need to put the structures in place to do that. So already that board is a one-stop shop for anybody who wants to come to Sierra Leone. In addition to that, people who want to go and invest, because you have two range. You have those who want to go and support the social sector through providing humanitarian work or build schools or support the hospitals. They're in a different category. Those ones, we have different category. Now for those ones who want to invest in Sierra Leone, you have the National Investment Board as one-stop shop. Currently, it's working in its advisory capacity. Because we have passed it in parliament and at cabinet level, we are yet to pass it in parliament. But now it is still functioning. In that regard, we are establishing special economic zones. People who want to come and do business. For example, if you want to open a factory that is going to create employment in certain key sectors, we can provide tax concessions for you. We are already providing land, free land for people who want to build hospitals. We are already providing free land for people who want to build, who want to build poultry, who want to engage in agriculture. These are some of the concessions. We are also going to reduce your taxes and maybe give you a period of time so that as a small industry for you to be competitive, we thought that we create a tax space for you so that you operate for a couple number of years before you begin to pay tax. We have all of this, it is part of our doing business project. We are investing, we are providing the resources, we are putting in place the rule regulations so that at least to encourage people to come. For those Sierra Leones who want to support and help essentially along social axis, meaning like our sister for the medical equipment, I think, I feel very bad about that. That is a very sad event. Where you have people who work very hard and try to support a country, those equipment should not be stopped at the port. Over the years, people have been over utilizing the duty waivers. People come with a lot of goods and they say they are humanitarian goods and they don't pay tax. So as a result, there was a very strict regime in place to be able to screen those ones. But for medical equipment that are satisfied, believe you me, we are going to do everything possible if I have those papers to get those medical equipment out so that they can reach to the intended beneficiaries. For the diasporas who want to invest, I think I've already answered that when I was answering number two. But be rest assured, when you talk about foreign direct investment, especially if you are in a country like America that's a capital-surated country liberal market, you cannot stop other people from not coming to invest in your country. But nevertheless, we are going to give you priority because you know the market, you know the ground and you know the terrain. This Investment Board, apart from the fact that it is a one-stop shop, we have established what we call the Investment Diallo. So His Excellency the President, we talk cabinet ministers from time to time, invite investors to lunch where we can discuss some of the obstacles that are bringing down investments in Sierra Leone and try to address them. But also, we are working with international financial institutions to provide credit line to our banks so that the lending rates, credit rate will be low. And as of now, it is very high and it is killing a lot of domestic business. But we are working on that. Be rest assured that where you come to invest in Freetown, if you go to the Investment Board, it is in my office. I will see you. There I will recognize you. There we will organize it. Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you very much, Mr. Vice President. Just, Mr. Vice President, just one more thing. I'm a media person. And I cannot sit and see a Sierra Leonean media in the house. And I don't give them an opportunity. So please, bear with me. It's gonna take just one minute. The Voice of Sierra Leone Television. It's a national slash international network.
Your Excellency, this is a civil liberty question. Recently, I, on my Voice of Salo Television Network, I spoke about the rule of law and freedom of speech. Sierra Leones saw a video making rounds on social media wearing a popular comedian by the name of Pupa making mockery of the President of the Republic of Sierra Leone. Right after that, he was arrested. Mr. Vice President, my question to you, how would you guarantee the freedom of speech of Sierra Leone? Thank you.
Thank you very much. First of all, I thought in the first speech you are going to congratulate my colleagues. First of all, I thought in the first place, we are going to congratulate my government for the Seditions Libel Act we have decided to expunge. The 1965 Public Order Act, the Seditions Libel Act, which was the act that, over the years since independence, government has been using to arrest people for free speech, we have decided to abolish it. That is a very, very important step towards civil liberty and freedom of speech. I isolated cases wherein... Everybody is free to talk in Sierra Leone. We are not clamping down on journalists. We have papers, social media, everything. But there's a fine line between freedom of speech, not only propaganda, freedom of speech, and being disrespectful of authority. Authority is authority. Freedom of speech is freedom of speech. The way you address a sitting president is different from the way you address an ordinary Sierra Leonean. Because sitting president is, the Excellency is the Grand Chief Commander of the Republic of Sierra Leone. It is the symbol and founder in honor of the Republic of Sierra Leone. So how you address him is very important. So we want to send this message that everybody is free to talk about the policies. Anybody can say free quality education policy is not good. You will not be arrested. But let people be mindful of attacking individuals, whether they are politicians or they are not politicians. You can attack the policy but not the individual. And you should show utmost respect for the authority of the state. I think that is what is in play. But Sierra Leone today, if you look, the scorecard of the MCC, we are rated, we passed the scorecard for civil liberties and ruling justice. That is because of what we have been doing and the fact that today, no journalist will be arrested for what they are just saying. But I give you a simple example. In Kafobulom district, where I come from, my parents come from Kafobulom. You have a local radio presenter who normally goes to the radio and just talk. One day, he was making a mockery of the Vice President coming to his hometown. By the time the guy could leave the station, you have like over 400 people waiting for him outside to beat him up. I was called in Freetown to save the situation. When I came, I told them in Kafobulom, I have thousands of supporters. So how you address me, you have to be very careful. Because I am not going to send them to beat you up. But if you insult somebody that they admire, they are going to beat you up. So sometimes, we cannot control all of our supporters. You understand that? That is why we are asking you for excessive caution the way you address us. Address us with some element of amount of respect, fear enough. But be rest assured that today, with the social media, with the radio stations all over the country, and I don't believe that there is any journalist in Sierra Leone today that is under fear. They investigate, they write, they publish. On several locations, people have told me, journalists have written about me, that I have turned diamond to stone, stone to diamond, diamond to stone. We never arrested the journalist. We never arrested the journalist.
I read that, I read that.
You read that?
Yes.
Just to tell you that we accept free speech. That is why we are scored internationally very high for that. But also to caution people that attacking, if there is a law against attacking individuals, the preservation of their respect. There's a law, and people sometimes want to cross the line. What we are saying, stay in the community, hunt people as journalists. Although you lose, because you have opportunity to wider readership. Defend the position of the Kafobulom. No, he's asking for an interview, that's what he wants, he's asking for. You already have this, you can hear this. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.